Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back there.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Have you ever been driving around Lee Summit and wondered, what's that going to be? What's being built there? Wow, that went up fast. The Development Minute is here to help. Highlighting some of the newest projects in Lee Summit, Missouri. Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen is coming to the former Lions Choice at Summit Orchards. The fast food chain known for its fried chicken and spicy chicken sandwiches is scheduled to open in early 2025. Local authentic Mexican restaurant El Toro Loco is coming to Summit Woods Crossing Shopping Center. The restaurant will occupy the former On The Border location and offer dishes like street tacos, enchiladas, and fajitas. El Toro Loco will be opening in early 2025. Fua Noodle Go had a soft opening where the former Pepper Jack's Grill was located in Summit Woods Crossing. The establishment is currently serving a selection of fua noodle soups, appetizers, and daily specials. Fua Noodle Go will fully open in 2025. The Quick Trip located at 1001 Southwest Blue Parkway has begun its redevelopment. The squeaky clean car wash is being demolished to accommodate a new 5,300 square foot QT building and a planned phase rebuild. The current location will remain open during construction. The new QT will open in 2025. Discovery Park, the 3.9 million square foot mixed-use project located off of Northwest Colburn Road and Northeast Douglas Street is underway and its first phase, the village is being graded. Town Place Suites Hotel by Marriott will be one of the first builds coming to the village. The hotel will feature spacious rooms with amenities including full kitchens. That's it for the Development Minute. For more about upcoming projects, visit CityOfLS.net.
It's extremely rewarding overall, just the fact of working with other council people and other volunteer commission members that are so involved and care so much about making this community better. It sort of kind of lifts your own spirits by being involved in that kind of environment with other people like that. For many years, I was a typical resident, raising a family, going to work, in many cases leaving the city for employment and went through a leadership class through the chamber. Learned a lot about our city and learned about all the great amenities and resources we have. And was asked if I was interested in volunteering on a commission. I said yes, and kind of the rest is history. I've just completed my third year on city council and so looking forward to finishing strong with this first term and look forward to continuing to serve this community. My thing is that there's so many talented people in this community that believe in so many different initiatives. And for me, one of the big reasons why I decided to run was that as a residential taxpayer, I felt that we can always increase the business tax base of our community. And that's kind of been a big part of my involvement on city council is to encourage and promote and make it easier for development to occur, commercial development to occur in our community, to increase that tax base and diversify that tax base. And so I think we've made significant strides the last few years. We've had a collective, great group of council members and mayor where we've really truly accomplished a lot of things that there were somewhat kind of stumbling blocks for previous councils. Working new contracts with our union personnel, firefighters and police was a big accomplishment for us. The fact that we were able to push along some initiatives like the downtown renovation for a market, a farmer's market. It's been a great experience to be part of those meetings, to help nudge it and to the point where now we have a developer involved is just a great feeling to have been part of that. And others, I mean, I think our park system, we've continued to support our park system to add a new community center, for example, that we negotiated with metropolitan community colleges. So I'm proud of all those things and just being able to help make a difference in many aspects. I love definitely spending time with my family. We have three daughters and they're all fairly active and some in sports and other extracurricular activities. But for me, I love being outdoors. I love the trails, I love riding my bike, and I love playing golf. And we have awesome amenities and options within our community to have that kind of a lifestyle. This June will be 25 years that my wife and I have lived in Lee Summit and have raised three daughters in this community. I know this city has incredible talented residents that come from all different walks of life, you know, very diverse group of families in our community that it's so rewarding to be involved on a government level or some kind of civic commission or committee that you get, in many cases, you get out of it more than you put in. And I truly live by that and I believe that.
Good evening. We will call to order the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 9th, 2025. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens.
Present.
Sherri Fraser.
Present.
Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Donnie Funk.
Present.
Terry Trafton.
Present.
Anya Johniford.
Present.
Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Lovelace is on his way. We will move to our next item of business, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please, to approve the agenda as published?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, can I get a vote for the agenda, please?
Mark Kitchens.
Yes.
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Anya Johniford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Thank you. And the agenda has been approved. We're at our position for public comments. Anybody have any business for the planning commission outside of any of the applications tonight? I see none, so we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda has several items, item A through I. I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a vote, please, for approval of the consent agenda?
Mark Kitchens.
Yes.
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Donnie Funk.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Anya Johniford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
The consent agenda has been approved. We will move on to our first public hearing and our only public hearing, and we will open up application PL 2024-25 rezoning from RP 3 and CP 2 to RP 4 and PMX preliminary development plan and conceptual development plan, Ovation 325 Southeast M150 Highway Engineering Solutions LLC applicant. Anyone wishing to provide testimony on speak on behalf of this application, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Thank you.
Ready?
Know the drill.
All right. Matt Slish, Injuring Solutions, 50th Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. So I think most everybody was here last time, but we do have a couple new ones. And it's been two months almost since we've been in front of you again. So I think we've done a lot of good work and so if it's okay with you guys, my thought was that I'd kind of just recap, show you the changes we made, and then allow any discussion we have from that side of it. So for memory, the site is being developed by Ward Development. It's a generational development with over 50 years of development. Grandfather, father, son now working through the development of industrial, commercial, residential projects in town would be the Lakewood Business Park, Town Center, I-470, then in the residential market Windsor Estates, which is just outside of Lee Summit, and then a number of Grain Valley, Oak Grove, Blue Springs. The list goes on and on for the number of homes that we're showing that they've built over the years. We look at the site, the site is generally located kind of the southeast quadrant of 150 Highway and 291. So down in that area, you have east towards Greenwood, basically the south kind of gateway toward Lee Summit coming out of Lake Winnebago, west headed downs 150 Highway towards all of the southwest part of Lee Summit. In that area then you have an approval plan or approved plan for Summit Creek. There's 184 units that was approved two years ago, somewhere in that range, that is still kind of waiting to get financing stuff set up to get going. To the north, Kobe Creek that recently you guys have seen kind of the revision came through modifying some of the lot sizes and pieces in it to kind of adapt to the current systems that are out there, the current demand that is out there. Mixture of commercial uses and then 150 Highway is that corridor that has the overlay district that has had lots of ideas and hopes and dreams of what it will become. And we're kind of just that next step in the process kind of on that southeast side. So we are literally at the easterly side as we head into Greenwood. The site is currently zoned R1 on the south half, R3 kind of in the middle, and CP2 on the north. Our plan utilizes the R1 zoning district and meets all the criteria of R1. We think that's a good use with the existing subdivision to the south. To the east, there's some larger estate lots and agricultural zoning. And again, we talked about Kobe Creek to the north. The northwest side kind of has an vacant property that has a number of ideas over the last few years that have come forward and then to the west, Summit Creek, that's undeveloped yet. The idea in looking at as we kind of went through the processes, we started to look at when the R3 and the CP2, what could be done, what could we do? The idea being is that much CP2 in this area generally necessary or going to do anything that will be productive in the near future? So we came up with a plan that we think kind of incorporates the ideas what the city had. Again, then the M150 overlay district for the area incorporates this site and identified this site as a mixed-use facility, an area where it needed to have some type of uses that'll continue to develop the growth on the south side. So then we started looking at our neighbors to the north. This is Kobe Creek and what you saw to see in Kobe Creek on the south end was commercial, some duplexes, some single family that they've built. And then what you guys just saw recently was their change over to the smaller 40-foot wide single-family lots with some quadplexes in the middle. What you start to see then is Kobe Creek, 40-foot wide lots, Ovation's single-family is 70-foot wide lots. Kobe Creek's front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks, all of the Ovation setbacks. We start to talk about the PMX commercial area in Kobe Creek is about seven and a half acres. What we're proposing in the Ovation is closer to 12 with the revision, it gets a little under 12 now and I'll shortly show you. Kobe Creek has an amenity plan of about 1.5 acres. The Ovation plan is about three acres. So is it only to show the idea of as we were kind of trying to develop our plan and ideas as we were looking at the neighboring properties or projects and trying to identify what made sense to kind of be used for this site. So as we started to look in here, like we said, our idea was is that the CP2 that was primarily three quarters of our site was probably too much. And so we started to look at the identifiers and say, okay, maybe there needed to be a transition from the single family, which used to be the R3. We proposed an R4 just to allow some variations in the lot sizes, no greater density than the R3, but simply just to allow some variations in the lot sizes and then reducing that PMX. With the revision, we've gone in and taken off a little more of that PMX area to try to give us some more space. But generally speaking, you can start to see the R4 or the design and the attempts of what we're going for. So overall densities on the sites, you can start to see of about 4.7, which is in line with the development to the west is about 4.3, Kobe Creek being at about 4. So what we left with, and some of you that weren't at this point, we're kind of jumping ahead to the good parts, we were left with the idea in the last discussion was we needed some off-street parking. We left with the idea that potentially the townhomes were too dense, too many. We left with the idea that the townhomes needed to not all be one-car garages, but maybe we needed some two-car garages. We left with the idea that maybe to the east side, there's some agricultural pieces, larger estate lots that had a pond. We needed to create a buffer from the pond. So through that process, we've kind of gone through and revamped the plan. And so what I'd like to do is kind of go through the ideas of what we had and then what we've gone to. So when we originally showed up to you, we had essentially 200 apartment units and 10,000 of commercial that's conceptual. So everything on the north end that's in that blue is being rezoned to PMX to allow for the development in the future of that space. The idea that we pulled that out of the plan and only did conceptual for this point is that currently there's almost eight acres of commercial ground in front of Kobe Creek that's available, has yet to be developed. To the north side of it, we've seen many, many plans that have come through, none of those have been approved yet. To the west side, we have commercial ground. So the idea on our side is that this area on the north end, if we hold it as conceptual, as the site starts to develop, as the area continues to grow, we can better identify what that use could, should, might be. The PMX zoning allows us that flexibility to make a mixture of residential and commercial uses that we think will be great along the corridor versus the current CP2 zoning district that is there that would allow for a much greater heavy demand of just commercial use with no residential. So then originally then we had 54 quadplexes for 208 units. And then we had our site amenity for the pool for this area and some open spaces. Hearing what we were told, we went back and we revamped the PMX area and reduced its space, still trying to hold the same idea of what we think that'll become with some type of an apartment or mixed use of that commercial. We then went in and we reduced the duplex or the quadplex lots from 54 down to 48 units. We went and moved the pool from down in here over to the easterly side, so to the east side of it, that's where that gentleman had the pond that was to the east of us. And the idea was the concern of getting activity near his home. So our plan was as we moved the pool there, we installed a solid fence along the easterly boundary and tried to create a good separation between, created a spot now, created a good separation between our site and his. We relocated an amenity down to the south end from the north end to kind of get it more internal, which also then allowed us to create a 14-stall off-street parking on the south side. We also then relocated and adjusted these lots in here to create a park space on the north end with 20 off-street parking spaces on the north side, as well as 20 off-street parking spaces on the south side. The idea being that basically we've created a zone of parking kind of in every quadrant of the site with the pool kind of being the parking off-site for the upper area. So when we then go to the amenity side of it, originally what we had talked about was each amenity, as we talk about the overall development, will serve its own area. So the R1 space has its own single-family pool amenity. The townhome space has its own townhome pool amenity with an additional park space. And then whatever this PMX combination to the north end would come would have its own amenity as well. We've maintained the same idea that the south end stayed exactly the same. The pool amenity has moved itself to the east side and we've taken and separated the park amenities to create two places that the townhomes would have their own amenities from a park or open space, but we've added the off-street parking at every one of those locations. From the townhome side of it, each of the quadplexes had single-car garages with single-car driveways. Square footage of the buildings were 1,400 square foot, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, rental rates. The idea then we came is we put in two-car garages on every other unit. So each building will have a two-car option and a single-car option. The reason in doing this is it provides, again, another opportunity of a different product than what we have, just the exact same out there over and over and over. There are products of single car that are already available inside Lee Summit up on the north end of town. We did some up by Woods Chapel, Ralph Powell area. There are places that it's just a separation of a difference for a person to live in an apartment before they get to a home. So it creates a townhome space that they can have and this allows us to have now a secondary option. What it does then is unit spaces go 1365 for the single car and 1585 for the two-car. Still three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, we still think the rental rates will stay in that $1,500 to $2,100. Mixture of the same materials that we had prior to that or in the last side of it to create a good variety through the entire development. Again, apartments are all conceptual, but we didn't, we wanted to make sure we showed you guys something from a conceptual look. We believe it's high-quality materials and similar style to what's shown out there now. It's a mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units, 700 to 1,100 square foot, assuming rent rates $1,200 to $2,400. Again, that plan will be back in front of you once we identify what that user wants to become after the 150 Highway area starts to continue to develop more down the road. From a single-family perspective, that area is to the south, you can start to see some of the single-family housing types that are standard for the overall area that are consistent with what we built in town. What we started talking about is when the project gets forward or when we bring a project forward, we have to look at the existing maps and existing plans that the city has for the layout. And so this one had a road connection east-west that was continuation from what was done in Summit Creek and a continuation of what was done in Kobe Creek. And so that's what all of the Orange Networking does. One thing that we did talk about with everyone in the south... One thing that we did talk about with everyone in the south, we had, I think, four neighborhood meetings on this project. Everyone in the south really liked having their subdivision isolated. However, there was a stub street that was done many, many years ago, again, with the long-range planning and the idea that having a thoroughfare connected through is going to create better emergency access, better flow, a better system for the overall neighborhood. So just kind of just identifying that the project was created and done to create that road network. And again, our updated plan still creates and has that same road network through the development. This project had an opportunity that was unique to many of the other ones that we've ever done, is that there are downstream sanitary sewer issues on the development. When we did Summit Creek, they were identified, and this entire 570-acre watershed has identified that there are issues. Nothing can develop out there until something is created or some solution is found. Water utilities came to us with a suggestion or a request that we could identify a location on the southwest corner of our site to create an excess-flow holding basin, which would then allow this 570 acres and all of the sanitary sewer issues and problems that exist out there today to be resolved. And so the development has found the space available and needed for that excess-flow holding basin to assist the city in developing this entire watershed through this project and through this development. So we think it's a unique opportunity for a developer to be a community assistant in getting the overall area developed. As we started talking in the area, there are, of course, a number of traffic things and issues and concerns that always happen. But 150 Highway in particular is one of those interesting ones because it's MODOT-controlled. We've had conversations with MODOT, and everyone is confused by the idea that we go from a four-lane system at the Sonic and then everything east of there is two lanes. We had conversations with MODOT. We've done the traffic studies. We've done all the analysis, and MODOT still sticks to the same answer that east of that point, 150 Highway will stay a two-lane road all the way through. They have no intentions of changing that or modifying it. As part of our development, we will go in and make a modification to finish that two-lane road. If you drive eastbound on the south-side road, it currently just kind of terminates and stops. Our project will help to create the reverse curve to taper that road from a four-lane to a two-lane in a proper fashion, as well as turn, a right-turn lane on eastbound 150 Highway. But we did have a number of conversations with residents and with neighboring concerns that a traffic signal that is required by the Kobe Creek and our development that will be located at the red dot would create a backup that would go so far that it would back up into Greenwood or so far that it would back up into the other light that goes into the other, the overpass or the interchange area. And the idea is, is that we went through and tried to show the existing ideas at each of the interchange locations. So if you're at 150 Signal, currently before the backup on the eastbound in the AM and PM is shown, and then the developed system with the AM and PM, you can see there's not much of a distance or a difference in change and impact to the system. And actually, the signal will likely create a better transition as it goes into town or goes into Greenwood or coming out. Dock Henry is one of the comments that is one of those interesting roads that's in the city, that essentially the right-of-way is split, that the city owns part and Greenwood owns part. And it's one of those systems and locations that's going to be difficult to create any significant improvement without a major improvement to the overall system. Our project has no impact on the Dock Henry system as majority, or if not all, our traffic will primarily go westbound. So as we've identified, we've studied, we've looked at the Dock Henry signal, we actually indicated to most everyone to the south that goes and uses Dock Henry, they will likely use that travel road through our development to get to the signal and actually have an improved traffic system for themselves to get in and out as the delays at Dock Henry start to reach 80, 90 seconds. Landscape plan, it's a mixture of all the normal plans, but because we are a P-Mix at the top and an RP4 in here, you start to see some more heavier screen buffering along all of the perimeters. It's a mixture of evergreens and ornamental trees and large deciduous trees. But as you start to look, this was the existing layout. And then with the proposed layout, it's going to be the exact same thing. There's going to be a significant amount of landscaping placed along the entire development. Along the easterly boundary, we're going to maintain existing vegetation and then plant additional vegetation along the easterly side to try to break up any, or close in any gaps that may exist out there on the outside. So as I said, we did have a number of neighborhood meetings. We started those neighborhood meetings with a much different plan. I think that the neighbors would say that we worked hard to find a plan that reasonably answered most of their concerns. It is a lot of good work. I mean, there was a lot of information that they provided to us that provided us a good ability to come back and try to figure out how to solve a development problem where someone enjoys the open space that they've enjoyed for many, many years. So neighborhood meeting discussions are the general discussions on the stormwater and the traffic and the pieces of it, the disjointed use as far as being single-family to what we ultimately become with our townhome use. But we believe we've made a good transition from the beginning. So I know that's a lot because we're recapping for some of you, but hopefully that gets everybody kind of up to speed and understands where we got from where we were to where we are. So we'll stand for any questions you need.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., senior planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 22.
Exhibits 1 through 22 noted and entered into the record.
It's taking a bit for this to recognize my laptop. Here we go. As Mr. Schlisch had mentioned, the last time this body met in November, it sent the applicant away with some direction, primarily being the point of discussion being the belief that some additional dedicated parking areas be provided dispersed throughout the subdivision to address any concerns regarding just kind of overflow of off-street parking from the individual townhomes onto the public right-of-way, and the fact that parking would be restricted to only one side of the street throughout this development. So here's kind of that side-by-side that you've already seen here. Overall, the street layout is fairly identical to what was previously presented with the most significant change here happening at that northwest corner. Now, that kind of more connectivity shifted from the eastern half to the western half, being shifted up north, closer to the conceptual apartments. And as Mr. Schlisch had mentioned, there's been a redistribution of common area amenities throughout the subdivision to the different quadrants to provide better accessibility, and then also allows the opportunity to group some of the pods of parking throughout those individual quadrants. So the table here was included in the memo that was provided. So with this plan, the developer loses four buildings or total of 16 units. So the total number of dwelling units on the townhome project reduces from 208 to 192. The overall development density, if you include the conceptual part to the north, it drops the overall density from 11 units per acre down to 10 and a half. In the townhome unit area itself, it drops down from 7.7 to 6.8 dwelling units per acre. So go back a little bit on this one and talk a little bit about the parking. As Mr. Schlisch had mentioned, that with each townhome now having two-car and single-car garage options, the original plan basically allowed for eight built-in off-street parking spaces, one for each individual single-car garage, and then one for the driveway that's right in front of those garages. So with this mix of two double- and single-car garages, now the number of off-street parking spaces goes up from eight to 12. So with that, we've increased the total number of off-street parking spaces up to 576, just stay on the lot itself. And then we had this grouping of 54 head and parking spaces, which does not include the 19 or 20 that would be provided here for the clubhouse townhome. So if you did include those, then you'd be looking at almost an additional 75, 73 additional parking spaces in dispersed through four different pod areas. Aesthetically, the revised plan, the image would be on the south. The original one on the north, as Mr. Schlisch had pointed out, very similar, just that mix of the double-car garage and single garage. But aesthetically, it would have enough detail, change in use of materials and color to provide visual interest and texture. It also breaks up those wall planes for a bigger building and more individually calls out or provides some more articulation for the individual dwelling units. So with this plan, there are continued to be four conditions of approval, one being the series of road improvements, call it out in the TIA. And conditions two and three have been updated to reflect the revision dates for the plans that were re-submitted on December 18th and December 31st for the most recent building architecture elevations. So with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Hector. Do we have any comments or questions from the public before we move into questions for the commission? I see none, so I'll move to the commission for questions. Commissioner Kitchens, do you want to start us off down there?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be for the applicant. So, changing the front end to P-Mix. I think that's, well, I'll save that for discussion and how that's going. I know we talked about high-density housing up there to begin with. When we switch it over to P-Mix, we allow quite a few different things to come through there. I'm not sure if we're speaking for the developer here 100% on this one, but what is the intention to, is it an absolute intention to add housing to that top end in the P-Mix? Or could that possibly devolve into something else?
I think it could be almost anything at this point because I'm sure everyone in town has seen the number of iterations that we've seen of what could happen to the north. It's our opinion right now that CP2 is super restrictive in the idea of what commercial zoning it allows, especially in a corridor that already has a number of acres available. And so the P-Mix, when we brought through the concept of having residential in there, I don't know that it necessarily has to have any of it. I think it's more driven to the idea of what else happens. And that's why we were thinking, if we do it conceptually, then the PDP for that will come through and stand on its own at a time at which the rest of it's got a little more understanding of what can, should, or might happen up there.
Would it be possible for a mixed use of residential and commercial or retail space through there?
And so that's kind of what our intent was.
That's the intent.
Is the residential apartment buildings have some potential commercial use on the lower levels, some residential on the upper levels. We had a standalone commercial building. Again, they're all ideas because like that, we think there's a good use there. I'm just not sure we know it well enough yet. And the idea is, is that the residential demand, we believe, is there now that can start to drive what that may become.
Yeah, that's kind of a double-edged sword in the city. A lot of people don't understand of population before presentation, so to speak. So with the discussions, I guess this one's going to be for staff. Thank you, Matt. Hector, with the conversations we've had with MODOT about that intersection, did that happen with the city or was that the applicant exclusively? I can only assume it was the city as well.
I can't speak to what specific conversations Susan Berry has had, but the city has always, when we have these projects that run along MODOT, we are involved in those discussions.
Great. So this might be a little bit specific. Come on up, come on up. We have that already-zoned CP2. I can only imagine that if we were to keep a CP2, we would actually be looking at heavier traffic flows coming through there, especially with residential being built just south of it. So my concerns there is MODOT's intentions of moving forward. So what was their intentions if we build this out? What does our car count have to get to? What are they thinking?
So we did have conversations. I don't know that we got so specific as to what they want. I know, I know it kind of ties into Greenwood, not any, there's no ability to widen 150 past Dock Henry because Greenwood is kind of constricted, I guess.
Understood.
And so, you know, we tried to work with MODOT on the abrupt merge right there at Sonic and tried to improve it as best as we could. But I don't think they look at the zoning, per se. They look at the traffic study and what's proposed to come in. Just because it's zoned commercial doesn't mean that they treat it any different than if it was... It's all about what is proposed to come in.
The short-sightedness of our partners sometimes. But I do recall years ago having a ransom road and a light put in at the intersection with, I believe it's Bailey over there, after years of back and forth with them as well. So just for the, to put it out there in the air, a lot of times what happens is we have to develop before the better stuff comes in, the better infrastructure is an unfortunate reality that we live in. Okay, thank you. One last time, Matt, for the applicant. With the neighborhood meetings, we had a lot of questions about the storm runoff. And that's really something that was a little bit on the back of my mind. But I'd love to hear from you because it sounds like we are actually improving land when we improve it. So with the development...
Tricked me.
With the retention that you will be putting in. And thank you so much for finding that on-site there. What is the runoff that we can expect to actually hit the watershed into Lake Winnebago? And what precautions and mitigations are you putting into place or developer putting into place in order to accomplish the regulated necessities?
Yep. So we actually held meetings with the residents to the south of us. And then I actually reached out to Winnebago and went down and met with them as well, knowing it was coming down through their watershed. So from a visual perspective of where it goes, you know, essentially, it works its way down through, you know, all of the back channels to get itself down to the lake. And so we are putting in a detention basin that will meet all of the comprehensive controls that your code requires. In addition to that, currently, there are two residents that sit down here at the south end that currently have a storm drainage inlet, basically a fill-in section at the end of their backyard, that we're going to take and divert the stormwater to the west. So we actually put it into the creek to avoid that discharge going straight toward their backyard. So as we've had conversations with the residents to the south, it's our opinion that with the detention basin and then the conveyance system that will move that water west and away from Belmont Farm system, everybody to the south will see a significant improvement. To the south, then, down at Winnebago, the conversations that we had with them was the conversations that just simply adding the detention basin and the stormwater quality controls that are required by city code will improve the downstream system that's going into Lake Winnebago. Now, there's still a gigantic watershed, as we talked about, that, you know, we're a piece of this 500-plus-acre watershed. But like I told them, it's a start of a process to where our 80 acres will be a significant improvement for both downstream and Winnebago, in my opinion.
Right. Thank you so much. So it sounds like developing this out is actually going to improve the situation from where it's at right now.
And I don't want to speak for Winnebago, but when we left that conversation, I feel like they felt the same way that it was going to be an improvement, and they were happy to hear that that was heading that direction.
Perfect. Thank you for bringing that up in this meeting so that we can put it out there in the air for everyone. Mr. Chair, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, any questions?
Can you, so the two properties on the south end, excuse me, on the south side, that would have the diversion to the west, do you have to physically do something to that particular property?
Yeah, so right now, what's in their backyard, the city just did an improvement to help make it better than it was. Because when the development was originally done, it was just a pipe that sat back there, and this 80 acres of water drained through an existing swale right into their backyard. Over time, erosion occurred. Over time, a lot of development upstream occurred that kind of created more water to them. And so they started seeing a big problem. The city went in over the last couple of years and created a better solution, but didn't completely stop the solution. So by us being able to control and develop the 80 acres and put the basin in, the developer then is going to install a storm sewer system at their cost that will divert the water and push it to the west. So they're going to spend a fair amount of money that is probably more than required because they could have just tied to the pipe to the south. But the idea being is that pushing it to the west over on this westerly side is the existing... is the existing creek channel that exists and won't impact anyone directly.
So those residents were at the neighborhood meetings or you just had?
We had, yeah, we had a couple of them show up at a couple of the media. It's been a great turnout. So I mean, the first meeting we had, we held it in my parking lot and I assumed that we'd have a few. And we ended up like forty or fifty people. And then the next one was kind of the same way. We had at the Gambler Center. It's been great. A lot of community outreach of all those people coming out. And so I think we've listened and tried to change and do things we could to improve what we could.
Absolutely. Makes sense. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovelace.
Got a question for the applicant. So looking at your elevations, it appears that we've got some elements of four-sided architecture. Can you kind of run through what we're, what our materials are and then what we're, what we're doing on the sides and the rear of the?
I'll, you know, as a civil engineer, I'll back away from that conversation.
Fair enough.
Good evening. My name is Brian Ron for the applicant, 1,000 Northwest High Point Drive, Lee Summit. I appreciate your time this evening and opportunity to discuss the project with you. So on the architecture, as you mentioned, we did look at all four sides. So our intentions on this project are, you know, very good, high-quality materials. So the siding products that are shown are going to be cement siding products. The architecture, we looked at, you know, some variations in color and styles and stuff like that to, you know, both be pleasing and also kind of break the, break it up. The backside architecture, we put in offsets on each unit, so it's not a long wall. So each, you know, each side of the building we looked at. And, you know, as mentioned, the materials, you know, we're pretty excited about the mix of materials and, you know, the project we feel will be very, very pleasing.
Yeah, so I see the offsets, which are great, and then it looks like you're using the batten board and you're using the lap siding offsetting those in the back as well?
Correct. So, yeah, we, we have like board and batten on the rear as well. We added some gables in addition to the offsets on the rear side to break up those long, that long wall.
Okay. And then I was, in looking at the plans a little bit more, I saw that every single one of the units had a twelve-by-eight patio, concrete patio on the backside. Is that correct?
Correct. Each unit's going to have a patio and then there'll be a privacy divider between each unit as well.
Cool. And then as far as the mix, and you're probably just as well, you know, asking this question to you, but the mix, so that I'm clear, it is fifty, this, this elevation that we see here, this is the only building type that's going to be out there. So it is going to be fifty percent of the units with two car garages and fifty percent of the units with single car garage.
Correct. So, you know, it's, each one of the, the individual lots, so to speak, is going to be this, this unit type. Now, we will probably work with, with some variations in the colors and stuff like that to, to break it up, but each building will have two of each type.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's all great. So thank you for that. Let me see if I have any questions for you. No, I think the only question that I had was for staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hector, regarding the parking counts, can you run me through the calculation of five-seventy-six? And then how much of that incorporates driveway parking spaces?
Okay, so, yeah, so we're looking at a total of forty-eight lots. So all of those are going to have.
What do you mean? Is it six? So you've got?
It's going to have, actually, it'd be twelve.
Okay.
It'd be twelve between the garage, between enclosed garage spaces and the driveway spaces in front of them. There'll be twelve parking spaces available on each individual lot.
Okay. Okay. And that makes up, that plus the additional off, off-street parking spaces, so fifty-four on that. And so collectively, that's what makes up our six-thirty?
That makes up the six-thirty. And that doesn't include the nineteen or twenty for the clubhouse area just because while they are usable for overflow parking, most people probably may not necessarily think of that as overflow parking because it's, it's a little bit more dedicated or, well, it would probably seem or be perceived a little bit more dedicated to that, but it's also available. So there could be nineteen more, really.
Okay. Okay. And I think even if you cut that, even if you cut the five-seventy-six in half and said that you're not going to have double stacked parking, although there may be in certain instances, right? That becomes a little bit of a musical chairs game, but, but even without that, it's two-eighty-eight plus fifty-four. So we're at three-forty-two. Have some additional parking that's, as you mentioned a second ago, also available. So three-forty-two then on the, on the one-ninety-two. So I just wanted to make sure I understood all those correctly. So, thank you.
Yeah, if you were to actually, if you were to, again, excluding the clubhouse, if you were to divide the six-thirty by the number of units, they're allocating about three-point-three, three-point-two-eight spaces per individual unit throughout the development.
Right, right. If you double, if you have a lot of cars in your.
If you utilize all of the.
And you utilize all the parking spaces inside garages.
Correct. Yes.
And are, do any of these have basements? Remind me. Okay, so they're all slab-on-grade. So the only point being there is that in many instances, the garage ends up being additional storage space. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Art.
Come back to me because I forgot my question.
No problem. Commissioner Trachten.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the developer. Those new amenities that you're building, like the pool and the poolhouse and all that stuff with that parking lot over there on the right, track C, is that being built out like when those? Is that the last thing to be built or when are you guys doing that?
Let Brian just give you a schedule.
Our intention on the amenities for that is that we would be doing that clubhouse in the first phase. So we're going to, we're going to build that, you know, in conjunction with, you know, the, the first group, which would be the main, the main street coming down through.
Very good. So the, you don't know exactly what's going to be in all of those spaces, right? You're looking at like pickleball or basketball courts and playground equipment, et cetera. What's that one, how wide is that one sliver, that southern sliver? Like what can that really, is that what, like a soccer track or something?
Which one are you looking at?
That southern one with the little, how wide is that?
This one right here?
Mm-hmm.
This will be more just a landscaping. That's why in the amenities side of it, I didn't count it. I, I put up here that we'd have kind of a park. This one, I put kind of a sports court. And this one, I put the pool with parking and potentially some other space. This area in here, it was just an area I thought that made sense to create some kind of a buffer still between the parking and the residence. So I just put a landscape tract basically.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can play mini soccer.
You brought up my other favorite topic, landscaping.
Yeah.
So I saw you did have evergreen, it's a pretty healthy variety of evergreens. Although, I mean, you have a lot of trees in the neighborhood, so thank you for that. I think that's great. But I, I don't know, are the evergreens on the outer perimeter? Is that what the, that looks like?
Yeah, so what I tried to do on this one, is I've, I've heard this conversation at previous planning commissions, is I tried to create kind of more of a description versus a specific call-out of plants. So we do have different varieties of plant call-outs. So this would be large trees, evergreens and ornamental trees kind of in blocks. But then we tried to create some landscaping notes that starts to talk about the spacing, the species types and the differential, you know, so we don't have a consistent one row of trees across the whole piece.
Right, yeah.
But each of these breaks is essentially a large deciduous tree, an evergreen tree and an ornament, two ornamental trees with it of some variety. And so the idea that it creates pods and, but when we develop it, then you could create pods and maneuver them a little bit. But essentially, it'd be a pretty consistent row of evergreens across the easterly side, the westerly side, and ultimately whatever comes on the north, then we expect there'll be something along 150.
And what is that setback for that landscaping? Is that what, ten feet, twenty feet?
And so what, we have plenty of room, so our plan is to keep all existing vegetation along the easterly and westerly boundaries. So if you'll notice, the rear yards of the west units and the east units, we made deeper than the other units. I go back to the lake. And the attempt is, is to try to allow more rooms. You start to see the existing vegetation in here. So I would expect that the proposed vegetation will probably be twenty-five feet, somewhere in that range, off that back property line on either location. So the landscaping would be out some distance to allow that existing vegetation to be maintained along that property line so we don't get into it. And the plan also is, is as we talked through at one of the meetings, the green space buffer space that we created on the residential side, we did not create it up in the townhome side because a townhome will be a single ownership across the entire development. So it'll be continuous maintenance. So the idea being is that with a landscape easement or a tree preservation easement along the backside, it'll protect all the existing vegetation and allow us to plant the new vegetation adjacent to it on that back twenty, twenty-five, thirty feet on the backside of those lots.
Great. And so on the front of the property up to one, like next to 150, are you going to be putting, are you waiting until you get that area kind of more defined?
Yeah, so again, everything up kind of on the north portion of this site is conceptual in nature only at this point. So all of this will come forward back to you guys with a preliminary development plan when that is identified. So none of the plantings along 150 highway will happen at this time. This will just be maintained open space until such time as that development plan is brought through.
Yeah, I kind of, I, that's why I figured. So thank you for clarifying that, sir. All right, that's all my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Jennifer Ford.
Thank you, Chair. So this is for the applicant as well. So, so we're on the landscape plan. I'll just jump to that question. This is the old concept landscape plan, correct? Okay. So when we've got all these trees planted, how is it react to the driveways for each of these codplexes? Is it like one massive driveway for each quadplex? Excuse me.
We'll work those in when you start to see, you'll see that we'll have the door. A smaller driveway will typically create a break between the two and there. And then you'll have an open green space in between. So the trees will be planted more than likely out in front of these doors. And then while the in-between, you'll have a space that'll be green space in between the driveway. So it'll be broken up, single-car driveway, double-car driveway, and then kind of work its way down. So it'll be broken up along the entire front.
If I'm looking at this elevation, starting from door left, tree planting and green strip would be to the right of that.
The, out in front of it is if we were looking, if we were at the street up front, this would all be green.
Okay.
This would be the driveway. There'd be some portion of green in between the two driveways. And then this would be green between that door and that door out in front where you'd have likely one or two trees planted on the front side of it.
Okay.
Again, green space here and then the same on this side.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Then we can flip back, back to, honestly, landscape plan is just fine. So we've got a basketball court that's labeled under track D or G. I can't quite tell. I feel like I'm doing an eye exam right now. Is that, that's only accessible by those within this quadplex property, correct? That no one from the R1 TBD plan is able to access this?
Right. So our idea is that each site will serve as its own site, basically. Each will be connected with an overall connected HOA, but each HOA will have its own independence. So the R1 will have its own. They have their own amenities. They'll have their own pieces. The townhome then will have its own amenities, its own pool. And then whatever happens up here will have its own amenities and own pool to try not to create some neighbor not happy with another neighbor or some use, extra use, whatever it is. So trying to create identified spaces.
Okay. And so it's going to be controlled more or less through an HOA with some kind of security measures of X, Y, Z.
Yep.
Okay. And then we've got the road, oh gosh, it's like, it's along their match line that you've got. So the west side of that match line road is already going to be connected to something that's existing.
So over here you're talking about?
Correct.
So eventually, so we're kind of in a spot where as far as developments go, I don't recall if you were sitting on this planning commission when we had Summit Creek come through that we approved a couple of years back. This development is there and it's basically all approved and ready to go. It just needs some financing to work out better to get it going. And once that is developed, then that will create that westerly connector. Until such time, this development's first phase will connect south to north to kind of divide this property on the east side and west side so that that'll allow this easterly side to develop, which will allow single-family and townhomes to get developed. And then the westerly side, hoping that Summit Creek will catch up, that we can make that connector to the west.
Okay. And so the same concept is on the eastern side of that road as well? It's a plan to connect at some time TBD?
Yeah. So again, when we take these properties and they're presented to us, we go through the city's comprehensive plans that they have. And so the thoroughfare master plan illustrated that there needed to be an east-west connection and a north-south connection on this property. And so that's when we start to do our initial layouts, how we make that connection. So the easterly connection is located at such a point that there is no definite plans of development to the east, but similar to the road that's on our south side that was built in the early 2000s, we're finally going to catch that road and take it north. And so this easterly one eventually, those are acreage lots over there, so who knows when, if, how that ever gets developed. But the idea is just in long-range planning is that there needs to be some connectivity.
Okay. So then knowing, having a better understanding of that being kind of a connection thoroughfare road, not just amongst these two tracks, but east and west side, does the capacity for that road need to be bigger in anticipation for additional neighborhood traffic through and from?
That road is a collector roadway. That'll be a wider roadway than the residential roadways that are built down in here. So the road that goes east-west is a collector, so sixty-foot right-of-way, thirty-six-foot back-to-back. And then the road that goes north up to 150 highway is also a wider right-of-way of sixty feet, thirty-six-foot back-to-back roadway for more traffic.
Did one of your presentation slides have the dimensions of those streets on here?
It would have on the development plan submittal. I don't know. I mean, you can see it right there. It's really going to test your eyes.
I don't need that right now.
So it is, it is on the development plans.
Okay.
But I don't know that my slides ever actually showed it. But yeah, like if you look on our development plans that are inside the portal as well, you can see, like you can see the sixty-foot right-of-way shown, but those dimensions are shown on each of the streets kind of throughout the project set.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned that because graphically, they all looked like the same thickness. I just wanted to make sure there was thought behind the capacity coming through.
Yep.
That was all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Szczesinski.
Chairman, thank you.
Hey, Matt, can you pull up the comprehensive or the, you've got comprehensive plan or the thoroughfare match plan, whatever you're showing? Yeah, right here. At the south side of your, of your development, there's a yellow east-west road that looks like it's planned there, but I see when you come out of the south side of your development, it, it ends into a street that's cul-de-sac. Are you following me?
Yeah.
So is there, is there another street south of the cul-de-sac street that's going to go east-west or what is?
There isn't.
What is the thoughts on that?
So, yeah, so, so that goes back to, to long ago. So back in Saddle Brook and Belmont Farms, there is a connector road that goes east-west. The thoroughfare master plan intended and showed a road that would run along the south side of our property or the north of these. However, this chunk here and this here is all in the floodplain. And so I think it's one of those identifications that when someone was doing the thoroughfare master plan, it was a pretty line. When reality came, it was identified that likely this east-west connector and this east-west connector would serve and that one could get removed. In addition, that was not shown as being that significant of a roadway as in that just light yellow versus the orange. So I think it was indicated that it was probably okay just to, to remove. So when we did Summit Creek, we actually removed the westerly portion of it. So it made sense when we did this one that it didn't need to continue.
And so the reason you left that stub in place was because they could actually go through the subdivision to get that southern east-west route.
The one on the east side, you're saying?
The one on the south side, the south side stub into that other subdivision.
Right, so that one.
Because they could go through that.
That one is the connection of, I've just lost the name of that street, but it's an existing street that's sorrel.
Right.
That when Belmont Farms had developed, that was created back then. So that was the connection point required to continue that guy.
But they could still go through sorrel and down through that subdivision to that existing east-west that's on the south.
Oh, yeah, to get back the other direction, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Our idea is that most of this development down here will see a significant improvement by the signalization of that point. And given a new location here is that, because even if you get out to the westerly side on that outer road, it's still a, it's a good light, but it's trickier than what I think this one will give better access to get to the site.
And then going up the other street to the east is.
Tough one.
Can you also now go look at the proposed clubhouse in that middle segment? What is the intended use for that clubhouse? Because those pieces of ground are all to lease, right? Those are leasing, those are all leased apartments, basically.
Everything in the yellow would be a for-sale, single-family. Everything in here will be a single ownership for leased townhome.
Okay. And then you have the clubhouse.
And the clubhouse.
So what is the anticipated use of the clubhouse? Is it a leasing office for the whole development or is it to be used for those residents in the leased area?
Yeah, so, so they'll have their own clubhouse in use down here. And then in this area in here, you'll have. here, you'll have a leasing office, you'll have maintenance facilities, you'll have, I mean, use overall, just like you would. So the idea, uh, for the townhome side would be, just like you have in an apartment, you have a community gathering space, you have all the amenities to get to, you have all of the things that are needed to maintain it. And so that's what that building houses, it houses an opportunity to allow the community to get together, it allows the sales or rental offices, it allows many, many things to happen there, that gives us space, again, for the townhome personnel to get together.
Perfect, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bembro.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, two quick questions, hopefully. Uh, first of all, in the last iteration, I think it was Connolly Street, was a single-side parking only, the main entry drive, is it Connolly or?
Oh, Kobe.
Kobe.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't believe you'll have any access to park on Kobe Creek Drive, I'm looking to see what Jim shakes his head yada or nay, but I, expectation is I wouldn't think that on the collector we'd...
Single?
No, up here in the townhomes.
Oh, yeah, we'll be all on the side.
Yeah.
So, single-side parking only?
You would, yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then, secondly, in the, um, single-family area, the southwest corner that you've identified where the, the, uh, storm is gonna run through.
Okay.
Uh, I thought you also said that there was gonna be sewer running through that location as well? So is there gonna be a lift station, a collector, is it gonna be a building? What, what is the plan for that?
I don't see Jeff here to answer it, so I'll run at it. It's an excess flow holding basin, so essentially, the sanitary sewer line that runs through there takes, I'll get to that map again, takes water from that entire area. Sanitary sewer gets inundated by stormwater runoff or infiltration through into the system that accounts for a large percentage of the, the water running through that basin during heavy rain events. An excess flow holding basin, and you have a half dozen or so in the city, is an area where they will set a metered manhole, so a manhole that they can set upstream of it when the flows get excessive, it'll divert the water into this excess flow holding basin, which will appear from a visual perspective as a grass-bottom basin, like a detention basin. It'll have an outlet system similar to like a detention basin would do, and it'll meter, control it back in a slower fashion, back into the sanitary sewer line, to then allow the sanitary system down below to catch up.
And this is an open-
It is open.
Basin?
And so it's the same conversation in the face I'm seeing, it's like we talked to the neighbors about, during that rain event, the amount of sanitary sewer waste as compared to rain flow, the rain flow far exceeds, I mean, the, it's, it is a fenced-in area, you have a, like I say, you can find them in the city.
Yeah.
There'll be a six-foot fence on the outside of it, they're locked up, they're controlled, you don't want your kids swimming in it, but it is an area where the majority of the water that's in that basin in a heavy rain event is storm water.
Okay.
And then it is controlled such that it, it doesn't create a hazard or an issue for anybody in the neighborhood, smells aren't, you know, typically in that bag, cause it's a dry bottom basin majority of the time, except for rain events.
Well, it's, you said smells typically, that's the next question I was gonna ask. What is the likelihood of there being any kind of odor affecting the neighbors?
You asked Jeff the same question.
Yeah.
So, so the conversation is, is that it is sanitary sewer, the belief and opinion is, is that it's maintained, taken care of well, you won't have any smells that are terrible to the sense of you wouldn't even notice it's there once it's maintained and taken care of. If it's not being maintained or not having accurately, working correctly, issues can arise. Being that it's a public facility and issue, anybody in the neighborhood can have a conversation with the city and get that done, and just like we talked to the residents, we will have residents that are directly adjacent to it as much as anybody else, and so it will have the same HOA responsibilities to maintain, monitor, and keep track of, that the city's doing their job. But again, in the city, there are a half dozen or so across the city that you don't even notice are there, and once the landscaping screening in effect happen on this, I don't believe that they'll even identify that that's what that is.
Excellent, okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Can you go back to the parking space slide?
That'll work?
Yeah, that one works. Well, well, the one with the totals, I guess, the one that shows the off, the off-street parking?
I, I think that one might have been on Hector's.
Oh, there it is.
I can still get there.
There it is. Okay, you can do both. Okay, so, we've got the, I just wanna clarify, there, there is going to be single-sided parking on all the street, it sounds like all the streets through the subdivision.
None of that, yes, but none of that's accounted for in these calculations.
Okay.
So that's in addition on top of what's here, but yeah, the fire chief had just commented that, yeah, one-sided would be allowed.
Okay.
But in this, like we've said, we're-
It's just off-street.
If, if, as Mr. Lovelace had stated, you account for storage in the garage and you only have your driveway parking, we still have over two parking spaces per unit throughout the development. If you don't count the garage, or count the garage, then we're over three.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So on the, on your overall street roadmap, what streets are public and what streets are private?
Everything's public.
All of them will be public streets?
Yes, everything inside the development is public.
Okay, and then, can you go back to your slide that kinda shows the overall road structure for, that, that one actually, yep.
Okay.
So, kind of tackled the multi-family and the single-family, the P mix up on the end, understanding conceptual, hearing what you guys said in regards to not knowing what this could involve or evolve into, so, are, is there going to be any right-in or right-out off of one fifty, or is the only possible way into the P mix area is to go down to Kobe Creek and then back in this place?
Currently, the answer is, everything accesses off of Kobe Creek or off of our internal road system. We have had discussions with MoDOT about a right-in, right-out. We have had discussions with that previous developer to the north about relocating the signal to the west side and doing some different pieces over there, so the access becomes a little different on that side. There's, that's why I say, there's a lot of moving pieces on that, but currently, as the plan would sit, everything for the development would access off of the internal road network, which also guides us to the point of trying to figure out what commercial is available. I have also had the developer, the owner of the land to the west in my office, trying to figure out what does he do and how does he create a connectivity to try to make it work. So I think there's a lot of options and opportunities out there that I think that's what our purpose and reason was of rezoning into P mix, is that aids in the future of whatever that discussion becomes, because I think there's a better use than picking something now with a limited access.
And I, I guess my question Susan might have to, uh, so, wh- what would be the requirements, uh, where the, the developer is saying this is conceptual, we don't know what's gonna go here, we don't want this to be apartments, everything to the north develops and it's booming, and the next thing you know, we're putting in all these pad sites for all these restaurants and all these fun places. What would be the requirements from the city's perspective of getting into this?
So the traffic study's based on what they're showing you here, um, so that the trip generation is based on the apartments and then the com- the commercial, and so they would do a traffic memorandum, which would compare the new use to the original conceptual use, and then they would determine how many additional trips that they have, and update the traffic study as needed.
But we're-
Like if they were to go from-
We're being asked to change on land use designation to something we don't even, I, I understand it's conceptual and we, I'm, I'm liking the overall concept, I just, I think we're putting a lot on this Kobe Creek with the single-family down below, we don't have, I mean, there's really two ways, and you, you're either going north or south to get out of this place.
So MoDOT's process for a right-in, right-out, I believe this is limited access right-of-way, and so in order to do that, you have to do a break-in access request, that comes at a cost, that comes at a process where you have to justify how it benefits the state system, not just the development, to add a right-in, right-out. We've tried to do that on their projects, and although it benefited the development, it didn't develop, I mean, it didn't benefit MoDOT's system. So, that's, that's the process to get another access point added in, even a right-in, right-out. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, I guess I was looking at the fact that, we're looking at a conceptual paint-up plan, and we're going to pin this thing as P mix, but this may not be the plan.
I was gonna say, the only thing I was gonna add to that discussion would be, is if you recall, if we didn't do the P mix zoning requests as we had right now, it's currently zoned CP two. The CP two zoning allowances are wildly more dramatic than what the P mix is, so when we were doing the development plan and why we were suggesting that, is that the P mix opportunity allows the staff, it allows the governing bodies, and it allows the developer to control a little bit better of what's gonna happen up there for that purpose, cause like I said, our feeling and fear was, is that CP two is your gas stations and your fast foods and your whatever, where the P mix doesn't have any of that.
I'm, I'm with you on that, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned, there's a lot of traffic going into this area, and thinking, I, I think for the developer, the benefit would be to understand getting a ride-in, ride-out of this place, you know, if to the north is successful, and hopefully our developer is putting his time in, is successful to the south, uh, just a question, I think I was wanting to understand more of the troublesome part that developer's gonna go through to try to get some better access to his piece here.
Yeah.
Not, not knowing that we're gonna end up with these apartments and we don't end up with five, six, seven restaurants.
And so, and so to that, to that point, we did have conversations again with MoDOT trying to identify, you know, what access points could be, what could be, how could you do it, and all the pieces and kinda what-ifs, which kind of, again, led us to this discussion of saying, cause when we came at our first meeting with the neighbors, we had this as a plan, and as we quickly realized, this is probably premature for a development area up on the north end, because there are a lot of things like that that are still unknown. So if all of a sudden, we start to talk about, you know, these sites up here get developed, Summit Creek gets developed, as soon as Summit Creek gets developed, I've got a whole another east-west road, so it's, it's one of these things that we believe P mix sets us up for the best situation to have control of, being flexible and being able to control what happens when this develops to the north and to the west.
So, Chair, if I could add a little bit to that, um, by putting the P mix on there, that actually gives the city more control, cause all land uses in a P mix zone are approved by plan. Um, currently with the CP two, there's a lot of, uh, land uses that are there by right, um, that we may not wanna see there, um, now, so the P mix actually pulls some of that back and gives us a little bit more control over future development out there.
Oh, I, I totally get what you're saying and understand that part, I'm just thinking that this, it seems like a chokehold on the traffic right there in that area, and, and not by the developer, not by the city, but by someone else. Go ahead, Commissioner Lovelace.
Just as a question for staff, with, so can we run through our access points one more time? I mean, I, I believe it's just, we have the, the single access point that's going on to, onto one fifty, correct? There's nothing on the backside of this development, there's no tie-in to Saddle Brook that's down there, or am I mistaken on that?
We do have an access point down to the south, sorry for jumping in for staff, but we have the connection to the south and connection to the north.
We didn't look over that today, and I forgot, so thank you, thank you for that clarification, that's all I needed.
No problem, Commissioner Arf.
Um, I just had a question on the, regarding MoDOT. So, when you said, um, I don't, I don't know if I'm going to phrase it exactly like you did, but, um, they, when it comes to the right-in, right-out, um, it's something that they deem to be beneficial for the state, for the state as a whole, the state system?
So limited access right-of-way is set up to have very limited access points to help traffic flow through, you know, and still provide access to side streets, but putting the priority on one fifty, and so any variation from what they consider the standard separation between access points is considered a break-in access. So when they purchased the right-of-way for one fifty, they purchased it as limited access right-of-way, and so they're now, you know, we're requesting that they change that and give us an additional access point.
So, is, would the criteria for that be something, such as if that was commercial and there were a bunch of restaurants there, they'd be more likely to consider that something that they would wanna break?
It, it's strictly based on traffic modeling and the traffic study, and how it benefits the MoDOT system. If we were to have issues with, um, let's say backing up traffic on the off-ramp, okay, that's a big deal.
Okay.
Adding a right-in, right-out, you know, could alleviate that, um, let those right turners on the ramp go through or whatever, and so that's the kind of thing that they look for, is how it benefits their system.
System, okay.
So essentially, it's gotta be bad enough that this break-in access makes it better, and it does, yeah.
Okay, all right.
An example of this is the Mulberry QuickTrip, if you can picture that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a break-in access just south of Mulberry, and, uh, the developer went through the process to get that approved.
Okay, all right.
And basically, that alleviated a lot of the traffic, you know, and it, it helped out on two ninety-one.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission? Commissioner Trachten.
Thank you, this is for the developer. Um, what's the timeline on the conceptual for the P mix area and the R one? Like, I know you're starting with this new area, but R four?
So our, our timeline is to, uh, phase both the, um, fourplexes and the R one together, so we do wanna start with some R one. Um, as far as the P mix, as Ma- as Matt mentioned, there's, there's a lot of question, that, you know, this entire area's got a little bit of, of flux going on, and, uh, we don't entirely know what that looks like, so we don't know if that timeline looks like two years, four years, what that is, but we know that we want to get a better feel for how the area's building out. We feel very good at the proper use, the R, the R one, you know, makes excellent sense. The fourplexes makes good sense. As we get to that, you know, one fifty corridor right there, you know, we have some commercial available across the street, there are some other commercial properties, you know, so as a developer, we don't feel that that would be the best use, and maintaining the existing zoning as that is would be that same type of use, so we're not set on a timeline to that. So, you know, that discussion, along with the traffic and the access and those types of things, you know, we understand we're going to need to come back, we're gonna look at that closer in, in the timing, as that area changes, to make that the right project at that point in time. But right now, you know, I don't have a, a plan that I, I have an, I'm anticipating bringing, bringing forward in the near future, because there's just too much unknown.
Okay, so I think I heard, um, an answer on the P mix, and it sounds like the R one, you're gonna do the same timeline as this R three, right? Or R four, RP four, um, but we haven't seen that PDP, or have we already approved that?
To- For the R one?
The R one's existing zoning, so by right, it, the land uses are already there, so you will not see that, it's a single-family.
We'll just see it in the final, okay.
You'll see a final plot.
Got it.
Yeah, we did not request any variance from the standard R one lot sizes or any of those things, so it's, it's just straight as it sits right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission before we close the public hearing and move into discussion? Yeah, we'll close the public hearing, open up for discussion, go the other way, Commissioner Bembro, any discussion?
Uh, no, just, uh, overall, uh, I think, uh, coming back, the majority of the parking issues are resolved, um, seems like it's about the best we're gonna get. Uh, I do like getting the P mix in there, uh, so we can see it again when it comes back through, and we can comment then, but other than that, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Tr- uh, Commissioner Szczesinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you to the applicant for putting a lot of effort into this development. I really do like the concept of the P mix, the RP four, and then the, the residential R one back, I think it's a nice buffering between the busy one fifty, back to the more single-family homes, I think this is a really good opportunity. I really do hope, and I know hope's not a strategy, but I, I really hope that, uh, that P mix does have a combination of commercial and residential to it. I think that would be a really nice addition to the city and to that area there, is to be able to have a, you know, what we can talk about, live play, you know, in, in the city already, and so, um, I think that'd be really nice, so I, I'm gonna be in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Janet Ford.
Thank you, Chair, I'm gonna echo what-
I'm gonna echo what my previous two commissioners had mentioned. I wasn't here for the last one, so I did listen and I, I do appreciate, it seems like everything that was discussed in the last planning meeting had been addressed in some form or fashion. I did have some hesitation with the PMIX, but I liked the idea of setting it aside for some flexibility to kind of see what happens around us, how can we appropriately react? And I think that's a great way to do so. And then creating that veil of transition between more public to more private. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Trachten. Sorry, I almost called Mr. Tuzinski, Mr. Trachten. You guys have the same haircut, so
Thank you, Chair.
I apologize to both of you.
Yes, I am, Trachten. I, actually, I like the changes they've made to this. I think it's, you know, they listened to what the community was saying and what we were saying and echoing. And so, I like the new design and the addition of what I feel like is breathing air into this development. And so, thank you for that effort. You know, I am concerned about that commercial corner up there and what traffic. I, I know if I was trying to get to, you know, boot camp or coffee shop, I don't want to drive through the neighborhood to get there, which is what you're gonna have to do now. And so, I like the idea of a right-in, right-out or putting the commercial on that closer to Colby Creek or something. So, there's something to think about as you guys, it doesn't sound like it's gonna happen anytime soon. So, you have a couple of years to figure it out. But, I mean, that would be kind of just thinking about it in the future, what's gonna happen there. But otherwise, you know, yeah, no, I like this and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Arth.
I appreciate the way the applicant took our concerns and came up with a new plan. And I really, being a numbers person, I counted all those parking spaces, so I was impressed with all the additional off-street parking you created to keep the congestion down. And I also, with the PMIX, I like the idea of that. And it's a good way to, to get the, the proper zoning, but also, and then also, make sure you're flexible with anything that might happen down the road. So, I, I'm in favor of this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lovelace.
Uh, yeah, I, so my preference on townhome communities and Lee Summit, I think moving forward generally speaking, is, is two-car garages. So, I think it alleviates some of the parking concerns that otherwise can happen. But that said, I think the elevations that were provided here were thoughtful. I think the way that you guys reoriented all of the different amenities was very thoughtful. I think you guys did a really nice job of addressing neighborhood concerns. So, all that said, I will be in support of this as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
Excuse me. First, I'd like to thank you all for going back to the drawing board, so to speak, because when we left here last time, I, along with my fellow commissioners, was very adamant about the need, I thought, for more than a single-car garage. And considering what we've just gone through this past week in parking and, and cleaning of the streets and thoroughfares, that sort of thing, I think it's very important. I like the way you went back and said, hey, let's figure this out, and actually provided a mix of, of single and double. And I think it exponentially increased the available parking. Aesthetically, it, it only adds to it as well. I, I like the PMIX option. We've seen in other parts of our city where we do have commercial, say, on the bottom and potentially the residential at the top. So, I think that's good. And using the hope strategy, if you would, if that or when that comes to pass, then maybe that would propel our state partner to, we can conduct another traffic study, so to speak, and then for direct access off of 150. I frequent that area quite a bit and between there and Doc Henry, it is scary. So, again, thank you for taking our consideration. I also appreciate, can appreciate that, you know, when I asked the question earlier about the residents, you know, did you speak to them with the changes on the south side? And I'm sure they appreciate what you've brought back to them as well. So, I definitely will be in support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Kitchens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the applicant. I think this is a textbook application of go back and work with the city and work with other cities even, which, wow, above and beyond, I have to say. And it was, this turned into a really great project. So, I think the commission did a great job stating the concerns that were there, parking being first and foremost. And I think it was heard and it came out even better than I could have possibly imagined. I really like this. As for PMIX, I think that was the best, most creative solution here. Just looking at it, CP2, I don't even think really grasped what we want from our communities now. We've kind of got an evolving picture. So, for an applicant to go reassess and then bring back a zoning change from CP2 to PMIX, it's kind of gutsy. But it was actually well worth it. I think that gives us more control over that area, as Shannon said. And I have my worries about PMIX, just because, I don't know, about a decade ago, we as voters did, allowed some things in PMIX that I don't think should personally be in PMIX. But we have control over what goes in there with PMIX. So, it is the creative and the best solution. And I hope other developers watching this, because they do, will definitely take that to heart. We can always say no, but, we can always give them, developers, a terrific standing here from planning commission and really drive it home. And I think that's what happened here tonight, and I'm very, very pleased with that. As far as MoDOT goes, I know we go up and down the ringer a lot of times with MoDOT and the roads that they control and they, they maintain in our city. Heck, we're looking at that with snow removal right now. We definitely need to liaise as a city, not, from the staff point of view, I think they do a great job. But we definitely need to make our efforts to, to liaise with MoDOT and try to get a little bit of friendliness our way. Because I see us a lot of times, leading the charge and developing out an area and then waiting for MoDOT to fill back in. And in the meantime, that leaves a lot of traffic issues. And we've had our problems with that in the past. So, there's no really good answer there, but I think having PMIX in there will actually push that forward and we'll be able to keep all the residents happy and get the city what it actually needs, which is more of this high-density, affordable housing. I just want to put that out there, too. If anybody's been talked to about affordable housing as much as I have, I think we hit it right here. I think this is what we need. This is the proper mix. So, once again, thank you to the applicant and thank you to the commission for working so well.
Thank you. I think the commissioners all said it best. I mean, Matt, to you and your team and the developer for taking in, you know, all of our considerations and coming back with basically what we asked for and, and, I mean, really playing a good neighbor to the folks to the east and moving the amenities over there to kind of block out the pond. And I think you guys really truly listened to what our community had to say about the development and, and did the best we could. I think everybody knew at some point, something was gonna be developed on that piece of ground. And you guys have done a great job, you know, answering everybody's questions and rising to the occasion to be a good neighbor. And the PMIX thing up front, I, I hope is very successful. It's just a sticking point to me with MoDOT that, hey, this is a great opportunity, let's, let's all be partners and let's all work together. And I learned a lot last Tuesday of how well MoDOT likes to play and cost share and all those fun things that go on with that. So, good luck. And thanks again, all of you and even the staff, you guys working together with the developer for putting, putting this back in front of us and the quickly turnaround. With that, Commissioner Trachten, would you like to lead us in a motion?
Uh, thank you, Chair, yes. I recommend appro, I move to recommend approval of application PL 2024-25, rezoning from RP3 and CP2 to RP4 and PMIX. Preliminary development plan and conceptual development plan, ovation 325 southeast, one Missouri 150 highway, Engineering Solutions LLC applicant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Can I get a vote on the motion, please?
Mark Kitchens?
Yes.
Terry Frazier?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Johnny Funk?
Yes.
Jake Lovelace?
Yes.
Terry Trachten?
Yes.
Donna Ford?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Penbrook?
Yes.
Thank you. And the application has been recommended for approval. We'll move on to our next item of business, and that is item number seven, round table. Anything from the commission? Commissioner Trachten, I knew you were waiting for this moment, so.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I, you know, looking at the agenda tonight, I was just super excited to see all the work the staff has been doing over the last month or so, probably longer than that. But eight final plats, three significant developments in the city. You know, it's good to see the Bailey Farm project come on, come into fruition. It's good to see Oldham Village, you know, and what they're, how that's continuing to develop. But I know a lot of people are excited. I know I'm excited about Q39, so. And then also, the Blackwell project over there, getting that moved forward. So, I just want to commend staff for, and developments and developers for all the work that's being done in the community. That's gonna bring a lot of new people into the community, as we know, we continue to grow, and that's gonna bring amenities to the community. So, thank you for that. The other question I had for staff, Shannon, and is, you know, livable streets is something that the Lee Summit adopted many years ago. I know it's, there's a regional planning committee on that. And I was just curious, I know Lee Summit kind of took a pretty significant lead in the last, what, complete streets, livable streets from Mark, Mark's regional plan for connecting communities. I was just curious, like, it's been, I think, 12 or 14 years since that plan was updated. And I was just curious, like, do you know who the, from your staff, who the liaison to that committee is now? Is it you? No?
It is. So, when we developed the Wellness Commission, the Livable Streets Advisory Board got wrapped into the Wellness Commission, and I'm one of the liaisons on that Wellness Commission. And one of our items of work is we're gonna revisit our policy and update it as needed.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that. So, thank you for letting me know that. So, are you also connected, go to the Mark Regional Committee meetings too around this?
I have not been, no.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I was also curious about. Well, more to come, I guess. But thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tuzinski.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just want to say special thanks to Public Works and all the first responders and all the people that were out there plowing snow in our city. I know they get bad rap sometimes on the Facebooks of the world, but I actually saw them doing an amazing job out there. And so, thank you all very much. And I know you guys don't get the thanks that you deserve, but we do really appreciate it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kitchen.
Well, I guess I'll say it now. That's okay. No, you, you're okay. I was, I was gonna agree. I was gonna call out all of our Public Works for the great job with the snow. Once again, we all see the people online who wanna, and they say it, but what a great job with such snowfall and ice. Incredible. Also, it's come to my attention, I believe I've said it in here before, but maybe I haven't, the Civil Air Patrol Squadron, which meets at the airport, is losing that space that they have at the airport. Because our airport's great and is expanding, and is to be expected. But I would love to see the city offer up some sort of civic capability for them to have a space to meet in. Now, I don't know if that's possible, but if there's anything that we can do to keep these wonderful civic organizations active in our community, I'd like to see it. But once again, the airport, it's no big surprise. It's such a jewel. I love that thing. So, but if there's anything we could do for the Civil Air Patrol Squadron, they are award-winning and a great, great addition to our city. I would love to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission? Staff?
I do have one thing. So, if you guys remember, last year, we kind of changed our process with regards to the future land use map updates, where we used to bring the, the comp plan, land use map updates on a case-by-case basis. When a project moved forward and didn't quite align with that, we would update the maps at the same time as the project came forward. Last year, we changed that, that process to do one wholesale update to the map at the beginning of January, February timeframe. So, we're in that timeframe now. Good news is, all the rezonings last year met the requirements of that comp plan, land use map. So, we don't have to do that update this year, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody, any of you girls got anything fun to tell us? You guys are ready to go home? You forgot one thing. Hold on.
Um, I, in case anyone didn't know, I'm growing a baby.
Yeah, we know.
Um, so I'm six months along, so come April, I'll probably take a temporary hiatus. But just wanted everyone to know, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Oh, you got one of me. Good job. We are adjourned.